...the regular portion of the council meetings. If you want to call during the work session, if everybody please rise for a silent prayer of reflection. Flag salute, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with open public meetings, Act 231, applicable on 1975, adequate notice that this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster and the Star Ledger on January 6, 2016, and posted on hold aboard the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. Right now, we're going to go to the holiday decorating contest, award of prizes, council will be placed.
Thank you.
Open the holiday, um, the Chamber of Commerce.
Speak in the mic.
...life committee sponsored the holiday decorating contest. And we are very fortunate that a number of residents in the city agreed to be a part of this contest. So tonight, we are going to award gifts and presents to those finalists in our contest.
I would, um, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, thank you to everyone who entered the contest. We saw some great homes. I see a lot of people here that were entered. It was really hard to choose a winner. Um, I'd just like to say thank you to the Committee of Volunteers that went around and looked at houses. It was just so wonderful to have this welcoming environment during the holiday season, and we hope to see even more decoration next year. We did a business contest as well, and participated, cheer community, and we love you guys.
Okay, so everyone come forward at the same time. Jill and Michelle Murphy, Will Wright, Drew and Monica Ruzell, and Garrett, God, Iris and Jim.
Give them a round of applause.
Excellent, red, white, blue. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sure I go for these because I wanted to show you the things that's blue. That's super new. I know it makes you feel odd, something that you've just said.
I have to give this credit to my neighbors because I was unaware of the fact that this is going on. I decorate every year anyway. I'm actually only the guy that worked at DC PNL who got all the power under the Santa Storm.
Oh. Yeah. Well, nothing. You're smooth on the low end.
Hey, Yvonne, look this way. Ready? On three. One, two, three. No, no, no. I just, I know what's going on with the meeting. Sorry, Yvonne. I just said those exact words to them.
All right, well, now move on to the public portion of our meeting. Have a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it. The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory abuse of or threatening statements will not be permitted. The Chair will immediately rule such comments, uh, such conduct out of order, and after appropriate warning may terminate any further, uh, comments from the speaker. Like to remind you, everybody has three minutes to speak, and when you please close to the mic, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Teresa Jones from Neptune, former business owner in Asbury Park. First thing I'd like to do is say Happy New Year, and, uh, from the folks on Dwood Avenue, thank you for the trees that have been removed. Uh, there were three addresses. They're verbally one of them. We never got anything in writing, so it is what it is at this point unless they come up with something later. Um, the second thing, I know there's been a lot of staff changes and other things, and I'm not sure that you're aware, and I don't know who manages your website, but during this past, uh, season, two of your city-sponsored events were not posted on your event calendar. And perception is everything because there were other businesses and other things that are not City of Asbury Park offices who had an event, uh, posted on the City of Asbury Park's homepage and website. Your Kwanzaa event and the tree lighting on Main at Fifth Avenue was not posted. So you kind of need to, like, really be mindful of that because it sends a message that's not good, just to make you aware.
Thank you, and it won't happen again.
Maureen, Nevin, Dill Lake Drive. Um, hi, everybody. I have, um, a couple of items, um, and then later on, you can answer me. Um, the parking lot at Webb and Dill Lake Drive, um, I had asked about non-conforming use because it's not being used for parking, it's being used for storage, and Chief Ketti and Michael Capabianco were going to look into that, and I'd like to know if, um, they found that it's, uh, out of the zoning, is against the zoning, uh, laws or not, and what's going to be done, if anything. Um, the attorneys, advisors, have they all been reappointed, or do we have new ones? It was kind of confusing from the reorganization whether, how that played out. Um, the sewer plant, um, everybody's talking about possibly moving it, and, um, I wondered what's going to happen with the municipal debt that's, uh, uh, issued under the sewer, uh, plant as a collateral. And that is currently, the principal is 25, almost 26 million, and, uh, that's just the principal. The interest is another 2 million on the sewer plant, bonds that are connected to the sewer plant. Um, also, I wanted to ask about the Salerno matter with his taking the car, the, uh, city car, out of the state, um, to Florida on vacation, and, um, it seems to be some confusion about whether we allow that to happen or not. Um, I'd like to know if anyone has reviewed, um, the former chief's contract, Kidman's contract, and can you tell us whether or not that contract allows people to take the city car on vacation? And if it, if that is so, do you intend to change the policy at all? Um, it would seem a rather strange policy for a city that has about $73 million in long-term debt, uh, you know? It's a lot of liability to let people go on vacation with a, a state, a city car. And if, at any rate, the people should be deciding it, and I don't think the people are really knowledgeable of that situation. I could be wrong. So, um, also, I think that it shows, it was, it was not publicized, and I think it shows bad judgment on the part of the leadership there. Thank you.
Let me just start briefly on the sewer plant. I don't know if you were here when Joe mentioned it at the work session. Uh, the sewer plant is, and I described it, Nikell, it's a giant jigsaw puzzle with a lot of pieces that have to be moved around and fit perfectly to work out. I started process and asked, do you mind if we look into it? No, it's on their nickel, it's not costing us a penny. So again, you're right, uh, $30 million in bonding has to be addressed, we have to address, do we get a guaranteed rate for so many years, motion township, what's it going to cost, everything. So there's like 20 pieces that have to be looked at, and right now, everything's at their nickel, hasn't cost the city a penny, and they're looking into it. So, uh, I think it's good to look into, it's thinking outside of the box, and we'll go from there. And Michael will handle the personnel issues.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the parking lot, uh, Webb and Dill Lake, that's a, it's not owned by us. It is a private lot that is being shared.
That wasn't in question. That wasn't in question.
That was the first question you asked.
No, it wasn't.
Okay. Uh, the appointments, the redevelopment attorney is a holdover?
I'm sorry, you didn't finish about the non-conforming use. That was the question.
I was answering.
What was the answer?
The parking lot is not owned by us. It is currently being used as the staging area for our boardwalk lighting project, um, in agreement with the company. So, once the project's over, it's still going to be an open-air parking lot. With the boardwalk lighting, we didn't have any place to put it. So it's a staging area that we are using as an empty lot.
The city is using it?
Yes.
And it belongs to, I understand, Sacman?
Yes.
Correct? So when the city is finished, um, is it going to be approved for a storage area, or is it going to remain a parking lot?
It's our stuff there, so I would assume that it's going to revert to a parking lot or, or undeveloped lot, whatever the owner's going to use it as. But right now, we're using it as a staging area.
Because it's a zoning matter, that's, that's the principle.
Uh, the next thing you talked about was, uh, you asked about was the attorneys. Redevelopment council has been held over. There's been no official appointment.
That's Scotland, correct?
Yes. And the Salerno matter, yes, Kidman's contract called for it. When the chief left at the time, Jack Kelly was the, the city manager, who told Mr. Salerno, as then deputy chief, still is deputy chief, that you're going to be following Kidman's contract. That was in the paper. Um, if you also, in the article, Jack Kelly said he didn't read the contract. So Salerno was following what the policy was at the time. There's a larger policy issue here, um, that we've been addressing slowly. The, this is a, a policy, so it's a council policy, mayor and council policy. The last time the personnel policy was updated was 2010, and then, uh, previous to that was 1992 where you had more of the substantive agreements. We're in the process of updating the personnel policy, which would update in part the vehicle usage policy. So it's a bigger issue than just a standard employment contract. Um, Mr. Salerno obviously will not be taking his car, the city car, anywhere to Florida, California ever again, he knows that. Um, but we're addressing the bigger issue of the vehicle policy as part of the, the personnel policy where it really should be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Tracy Rogers, Memorial Avenue. Um, it's 24 degrees out, and I wondered if code enforcement was staffed to make sure all homes are providing heat, making sure that residents, in case of emergency, uh, situations are brought forth. Uh, do we have an emergency plan in place? Houses go down with heat to, for displaced people in case of emergency? And also, I asked about the transit station being held open in these, in these terrible hours for people who, you know, unbannishing themselves, don't have any place to go, or has the city worked along with the agencies here to provide service to people during this time of the year? That's it.
In the matter of landlords and, um, ownership of any property being cold, the, I believe that gets first reference to the county because, um, and I say that, I, I want to talk to Doug and Tony in the Social Services Department because that's where a lot of the initial calls come in. Um, the county has coordination of all the shelters, so in order to turn the transit station into a shelter or to be opened as a heating zone, it has to be coordinated through the county. Um, with respect-
Have we done that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Would we be looking into?
Well, we actually have a shelter in Asbury Park called The Mission, right? So that's a 10-day shelter for any man. Um, uh, it, it does not allow women in it, but any 10-day shelter, it's a 10-day shelter for any male, and then there's a longer-term, six-to-nine-month program, provided you follow whatever guidelines they lay out. So I would have, and listen, if you want to look into the transit center, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just saying there is a 10-day shelter in Asbury Park.
Well, I'm just saying, in, in case, like you said, most, so, is it on the website that emergencies with heating, all these calls go to the county? So the city's not responsible to go out and inspect to make sure?
We would still inspect.
Because I talked to-
If we get a call, we inspect. That's, that's standard, but I'll, I'll check on the website to see where we do post that, if it is posted, and if it's not, we'll add it.
We, we also have CDBG money as far as somebody can't pay their heating bill, and there's a couple bills on tonight's bills and claims where that's being used.
We are using that?
Yes. So somebody approaches second floor and says, I've got a problem, I can't afford my heat. There is money in the CDBG money, and it, there's a couple units on tonight's bills and claims where that was used.
Okay. I mean, does, do people know about it?
Yes.
Hello, Mayor and Council, Jerry Scarama Long Branch. Okay, um, what I wanted to say, I guess I really didn't get the answers I wanted on Monday, so I wanted to ask you in a different way. Um, what are our visions, or what are your plans for 2016 to roll back taxes or have cuts? I'd like somebody to talk about it. I don't know who's going to answer it. Then, um, we have to talk more about shared services. I'd like someone to talk about that, what we have a short-range plan to do that, and maybe long-range plan, maybe not tonight, but at some point sooner than later. And then I would like to know, when we're hiring new people, are they going to come up with their own 401Ks, or they're going to pay for their own health benefits? I mean, companies now have tracking devices on people's cell phones, where their employees are, what they're doing, that many companies are reinventing themselves, and I think good government should reinvent themselves because with the pension plan, things are falling apart. In the paper on Sunday, I'm not sure of all the figures yet, but we went up 8% in taxes while other towns stayed equal. There's something wrong. So like I said, I'd like us to have a budget committee because I mentioned it once before, you guys have all the professionals you want, but we know what happened with the Titanic. It was designed by professionals, and it went down. The ark was built by farmers, and the only insects that were not allowed on the ark were termites. Just think about it.
So one of the things I think I'll, I'll just, I'll take is that we, uh, I, I think there's several people in the audience who have talked about us doing, um, and I'm using not the language they use, but, you know, some sort of update, like a city-to-the-city address, you know, talking about the previous year and the upcoming year and some of the goals. So, um, I don't know if that takes care of your first part, but we're working on that. Um, we're working on that to, to have at, um, you know, hopefully our, our next meeting.
And what about, are you guys going to talk about a budget committee? Because we really need one. You have quality of life, you have all these other committees, budget committee, the taxes affect everybody's livelihood in this room.
The one thing I will say about our taxes, and, and I'm, I'm assuming, so our, a report of Monmouth County taxes came out, right? And what, you, I think we all know Lock Arbor has some of the highest taxes in Monmouth County, and Rumson has the highest taxes in Monmouth County. Asbury Park is, um, let's say, this is Rumson, this is the lowest one, and I forget who it was, Asbury is closer to the lowest. So I know everybody complains about our taxes, I'm not suggesting that you shouldn't complain.
No, but Amy-
I'm only suggesting that our taxes are nowhere near the highest in, in Monmouth County.
But Lock Arbor and Rumson do not have $76 million in debt.
I think-
I'm just saying, please, just, we need a formula, we need budget committees, we need budget, we need each, um, department head to come up with meetings every, twice a month, and once a month, the city council could tell us, or the city manager could tell us, Jerry, or Rita, whoever they want to say, whoever you want to put a sticker on and say, this is what they think they saved from last year's budget. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And as far as shared services, uh, we probably leave the county as far as shared services, be it with, there's one on tonight's agenda with Neptune, there's previous ones with Bradley Beach, we have several with the county to save money on, be it repairs to fire trucks, be it, uh, buying salt through the, for the winter, uh, we have probably more shared services, we're, we're ahead of the curve on shared services, and we're going to continue to look at them because that's where we can save money.
Okay, no, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Motion to close. Move it. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello, Mayor and Council, my name's Jay Harmon. I spoke here last time, uh, about the second week of November, and I had voiced a concern. Um, I own a business on Asbury Avenue, Atlantic Architectural Millwork, and we had noticed a spike in, um, vagrants, panhandlers, and illicit activity in the neighborhood, which really hadn't existed prior. Um, the next day after the council meeting, I met with Acting Chief Salerno, had about a 45-minute meeting with he and a couple of his, um, staff members. He listened, took down notes, uh, he responded back to me later on that day and suggested having a, um, a meeting at my business to, uh, uh, address the plan of how he was going to tack the spike of, uh, rise of activity in the neighborhood, and, um, uh, what I had done is I brought together four or five other businesses, and he came in on Fri-, Chief Salerno came in on Friday with, um, four or five other officers. He explained what was happening, and he laid out a plan, which he implemented immediately, and within a couple of days, uh, the problem had been eradicated, and, uh, I just think that, uh, he's got a tough position there, but I'll tell you, he's, he handled himself very professionally, he was very effective, and I could see as a respect of his, uh, his force as well. So I think, uh, it's easy to ride somebody in that, that position, but I, he deserves a, um, some recognition, and I, uh, I'm here to voice that, and I can't give the guy any higher honors at this point, so, thank you.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have to say my name?
Yes.
Jennifer Lampert.
Address?
Uh, 905 Hack. Um, so while we're ending on alkylates, I just was coming before you, and I'm, I'm going to read it because I'm terrible at public speaking. I just wanted to thank the mayor, the council, the city manager, city attorney, the police chief, and the police department, especially Mike Casey, for being collaborative, cooperative, and insightful, um, in working towards helping our business have a positive impact on our local community as, as much as possible, um, while trying at times to figure out how we can maintain the bar crowd and the people that are leaving our establishment. It proved to be a very fruitful process for us, and we're very happy with the work that was done between ourselves and, uh, the acting chief. And I just, uh, I wanted to say thank you for communicating with us, and I'm looking forward to having an open communication with the police department and the council and everyone involved as the city grows, to make sure our business and other, other businesses are having a positive impact on the city and, and trying to maintain some of that, uh, foot traffic that we're all reaping the rewards of. So just thank you very much, and, um, that's it.
Thank you. Motion to close. Close to the stop bar, we're ahead.
Second. All in favor? All right, well, next, move on to acceptance of minutes. Have a, uh, motion to accept December 21st, 2015 workshop, December 23rd, 2015 executive, and December 23rd, 2015 regular.
Move it.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton? Yes. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Now move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council will be considered, or poolable with one vote. These matters are to be considered routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. A discussion is desired by one or more council members. As for a particular item, then, said item shall be removed from the council to the consent agenda and considered separately. Tonight's consent agenda consists of Resolution 2016-33, approving special events wedding applications as presented on January 11, 2016. Resolution 2016-34, resolution authorizing the payment of payroll in the amount of $839,873.25. Resolution 2016-35, authorizing appointments to the Parking Advisory Committee.
Read the name. Just because we said we're going to read names, we're not, so read the name.
I guess Michelle McGuire.
Thank you. Resolution 2016-36, authorizing a $500 change fund to be utilized by the Parking Utility Operating Fund. Resolution 2016-37, resolution rejecting bids for vehicle maintenance repairs. Resolution 2016-38, resolution rejecting all bids for vehicle transmission repairs and associated maintenance. And Resolution 2016-39, resolution rejecting all bids for computer maintenance repair. Have a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton? Yes. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Individual resolution, Resolution 2014-40, resolution authorizing transfer of 2015 appropriation reserve budget for fiscal year 2016. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton? Yes. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-41, resolution authorizing the payment of bills in the amount of $1,866,587.73. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Okay, Mayor, you're going to abstain from that one line item that we discussed earlier.
Correct.
Councilmember Clayton? Yes. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore with that one exception?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-42, resolution awarding contract for vehicle collision repairs. Have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton? Yes. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-43, resolution authorizing a shared service agreement between the City of Asbury Park, attachment and aptitude for maintenance and repair of police vehicles. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton? Yes. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-44, resolution pursuant to NJSA 48:11-4.3, authorizing use of competitive contracting for the operation, management, and administration of data processing services. Have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton? Yes. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-45, resolution amending special conditions for liquor license, 1303-33-054-07, House of Independence LLC.
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton? Yes. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2014-46, authorizing approval to execute application agreement with New Jersey Department of Transportation for urban A U F Y 2011 and 2012. This is for Prospect Avenue. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton? Yes. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-47, a resolution for permission to apply for FEMA AFG grant. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton? Yes. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner? Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-48, resolution approving a public health nursing, nursing contract for 2016. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-49, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park and County of Monmouth, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of the redevelopment agreement for 603 Lake Avenue LLC.
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-50, which is a resolution of Mayor and Council of the City of Asbury Park approving a pilot agreement for Boston Way Village LLC for Asbury Housing Authority, Boston Way Village Housing Development. Believe that matter's going to be tabled. Have a motion to table it, please?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Eyes have it. 2016-51, resolution amending Resolution 2015-410, State New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Enabling Grant. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Amy?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-52, resolution authorizing execution of a right-of-way use agreement with Foster River Fire LLC. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Say yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Eyes have it. Resolution 2016-53, resolution of Mayor and Council of the City of Asbury Park, acting as a waterfront redevelopment entity, authorizing issuance of certificate of completion to Madison Asbury Retail LLC for the First Avenue Pavilion. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Question, go ahead.
So, were we going to do something to put a date on this?
That was a discussion, yes.
It was a discussion.
Has it been added?
We were going to include that in the performance guarantee itself, not in the resolution. So, when Mike and I work that out, um, we'll make sure it's in the document. Okay?
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Onto ordinances, we have the first reading. 2016-01, it's a bond ordinance amending and supplementing bond ordinance number 3036, which provides for the reconstruction of a footbridge at Sunset Lake heretofore finally adopted by the City of Council, City of Asbury Park in the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, on January 16th, 2013, to increase the appropriation by $550,000, and to increase dollars, and to increase the authorization of bonds or notes by $550,000. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing for this ordinance is scheduled for January 27th, 2016. Ordinance 2016-02, revising traffic and parking regulations for residential employee parking permits, and amending and supplementing ordinance 2015-55. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn? Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for January 27th, 2016. We're on now to second reading. We have ordinance 2015-55, revising traffic and parking regulations for certain designated areas of the City of Asbury Park, and amending and supplementing Chapter 7, title Traffic of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey, Quarterly.
And Mayor and Council, before you open up this ordinance for its, uh, public hearing, I would recommend that you consider moving and seconding the amendments that I referenced during the, uh, work session portion of tonight's meeting. That were three, uh, non-substantial amendments that would be worked into pages five and six, as I indicated during the work session. They're shown in highlight on the versions of the document that you have before you. And they relate to certain comments and feedback, um, and input that the Parking Advisory Committee received from residents after this ordinance was introduced. And, uh, based on recommendations from the Parking Advisory Committee, the committee has requested that those revisions be incorporated into the final version of this ordinance.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Now, can I have a motion to open ordinance 2015-55 to the public?
Move it. Second.
All favor? All right. All opposed? Does anybody like to speak on this matter? Motion to close?
Move it.
Second. All favor?
All right.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2015-55 as amended?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn? Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Approve ordinance 2015-55 as amended?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
2015-56, amending and supplementing Section 2-9 entitled Fire Department, Chapter 2, Administration of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey, in order to establish a new subsection thereof to be known as Subsection 2-9.14, entitled Fees for Lockout Services for Motor Vehicles. Have a motion to open ordinance 2015-56 to the public?
Move it.
Second. All in favor? All opposed? Anybody like to speak?
$50? That's, that's going to be the fee if you get locked out and you need the fire department to break into your car for you? It seems a little steep.
That, that's, if you're a resident, you get two times free.
Oh, okay.
If you're a resident, you get two times free. If you're a non-resident, and we have to send the trucks, we're charging. So, we're trying to increase revenue to reduce taxes, Jerry.
Yeah, Jerry. He never pays attention when I talk.
This is just another, I mean, it's, it's, we hope it's not one penny. But, it does take, the police can no longer do it.
Yeah.
The fire department has the apparatus, they have to, like, run the truck to the spot and everything. It does cost them fuel.
No, I agree.
Okay.
I agree that, that there should be a fee, it just seemed like, you know, 50 bucks. The, the third time, you know, shame on you, right?
Okay, not that I haven't locked, got locked out of my car, Jerry Skarner Longbranch. Not that I got locked out of my car, but I was wondering, before they raced the truck or the police to go do it, could the operator be instructed to say, "Do you have AAA?" Or, "Do you have Blue Star?" Or something that will automatically unlock your car before you, at least try to be helpful, before you try to stick them with a bill?
I, I believe we already do that, because I've locked myself out, and I've been asked that same question.
And they ask you all those questions?
Yes.
Okay, that's a-
Yep.
Motion to close ordinance 2015-56? Second. All favor? All opposed? Have a motion to adopt ordinance 2015-56?
Move it.
Second.
Question?
Okay, it's not a question, I got to follow up, Jerry. I said, "Don't come, I'm calling my wife." But, I didn't want her to know that I was in it with someone.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
All favor?
All right.
Good night.
Good night.